Good evening. We'll start this evening with the roll call. Suzanne?
Thank you. Mayor Levy?
Here.
Mayor Protim Harvey?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
Matthews?
Here.
Mella?
Here.
Sawyer?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. If you all rise and join me in the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome to everybody. We are on Agenda Item Number Four in Unfinished Business and we're considering Mr. Berry's salary adjustment.
Thank you Mayor. Counsel, my recommendation to you this evening is to adjust my salary per discussions during my evaluation process.
Counsel, I think Phil missed it, I believe.
But I was briefed by Mr. Berry in the interim.
Anyone have any questions before we approve his new contract? Okay, if not, call for motion. I move approval as presented.
Second.
Thank you Suzanne.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you Counsel.
Thank you very much. Okay, this is kind of a fun meeting tonight. We get to say farewell to some folks that have been an integral part of our community and we're gonna have a couple of city council members get to speak and make a few comments on the last four years. One case and Phil has had quite one year. And so, we have a couple of gifts for those folks in the audience for both council members and if you'd like to, you can go over and sign them on the back. There's a pen over there. So, let's start with Phil Mellis since he's the furthest one away from me.
It's a deal. First, congratulations Neil on your election and to Carol on your reelection and to Val Cowher and Paul Sornier on winning election. At the end of World War I, it became evident that Italy had arrived late to the fight. Indeed, a British ambassador crypt that as the armistice was about to be signed, Italy finally went decisively into action. Although it's a distant analogy, it highlights the importance of timely intervention when the precursors of problems become evident. Although our elected officials are charged with representing our interests, it's you, the people, who are the ultimate firewall against the encroachment of big government and rule by administrative fiat. Waiting until the advocates of large centrally controlled government are perfectly aligned and poised to exercise their power is as unwise as it is dangerous to a free republic. We're witnessing a growing and well-earned distrust of elected officials across all levels of government. Many people feel unconnected to the representatives and perceive that decisions that impact their lives are made based on special interests, not the common good. That breeds arrogance among our representatives and a false deference to the people they serve. That in turn creates an atmosphere of distrust which feeds on the sense that only a select group of the electorate, the few, the powerful, is being respected. That is abundantly clear as Congress routinely agrees to trade agreements that disadvantage middle-income earners, turns a blind eye to illegal immigration, and signs off on budgets that expand our massive debt obligations. The antidote is contained in the Latin phrase "principis obstra", which means we the people must resist the first encroachment upon our constitutional rights and liberties. As James Madison famously wrote in Federalist 51, "If men were angels, no government would be necessary." But it's equally true that those who govern aren't angels. So, the question is, who will guard against the abuse of those who govern? Ultimately, all of us must be vigilant, understanding that our liberties are always in jeopardy. So, as I leave my council position, I strongly encourage the citizens of Woodland Park to scrutinize the actions of their elected officials across all levels of government, respectfully demanding transparency and candor, and to hold them accountable for their decisions. And I ask the council that is about to be seated to thoughtfully consider their actions in their official capacity, to ensure they are safeguarding, not depreciating, the special bond of trust they have with the people they serve. In closing, it has been my distinct privilege to serve the citizens of our city and I wish you and everyone Godspeed and good health. Thank you.
Phil, thank you very much. If I said "well said", I don't think you would...I don't think you would hold any water with people. They know it was very well said. Thank you. Mr. Carlson?
Thank you. And congratulation Mayor and the others that were elected to the city council and I wish you well. Anyway, four years ago when I ran for city council, I promised the citizens of Woodland Park that I would do everything possible to bring an aquatic center to the city. This dream of decades is now coming to pass with groundbreaking scheduled to take place within the next month. Having achieved this goal with the help of fellow city council members, the city staff, and especially the voters who passed the municipal bond ballot question in November 2014, I decided not to run again. I had accomplished my purposes. However, there are still some things to be done and I leave this to the new city council members to finish. One of the advantages of four years of experience is you have some, hopefully wise advice to pass on and that's what I plan to do here. The issues that were and continue to be foremost in my mind are contained in the proposed resolutions of ballot questions that the council discussed during a special meeting held earlier this year. Noel Sawyer asked me at the time whether this was going to be my legacy. No, the aquatic center would be my legacy. But time and other priorities leading up to this Tuesday's election did not allow for decisions to be made on these documents before the end of my term. So, the unfinished business is basically as follows. First, four years ago when I was walking around my neighborhood to get the 25 signatures required for my candidacy petition, I discovered what is known as donut holes. Lots totally surrounded by or geographically contiguous with the city of Woodland Park, which are not part of the city. So, my first resolution was to remove any impediments that the city might be putting in the way of the owners of these lots to request voluntary annexation. Impediments include the requirement to pave their roads and to commit to the city's water systems and sewer systems. In the lead up to this election, many donut hole residents realized the importance of becoming citizens of Woodland Park so that they might have a voice in matters important to the committee, such as who would be the mayor, the city council members, and even more importantly, whether we would increase sales taxes for the school on addition. Well, I...so they recognized the need or the benefit of becoming a citizen of the Woodland Park where they have a say in what affects them. So, I asked Counsel to pursue this and hopefully provide an answer before the next election so people have time to be annexed or not. Secondly, I proposed a resolution which would provide the process for planning, programming, and budgeting capital projects, to include how each is identified and prioritized within a five-year capital investment plan. The resolution takes into account lessons learned from implementing the Woodland Aquatic Project. Citing would not have been a contentious issue if proper procedures existed and had been followed. I also recommend to Counsel that they agree to procedures prior to we program any capital projects in 2017 and beyond. Thirdly, with regard to capital investments, I proposed a ballot question for consideration by voters in November 2016, which would expand the eligibility of the Street Capital Improvement Project Fund to include other capital projects. Income for this fund comes through the 1% sales tax approved by voters in November 1984. That was the last sales tax increase that our voters approved until last Tuesday when we agreed to increase for the school. Lots of years in between. The sales tax currently generates about $1.8 million a year, which only about 800,000 is required but not for street capital improvements but for street maintenance. We've gone...we're now in the maintenance phase of this, and for stormwater drainage. The $1 million balance is available for other capital investments such as Phase Two of the Aquatic Project, which would include a gym, handball courts, walking track, multipurpose rooms, etc., a roof over the ice skating rink, which has been a longstanding requirement too, converting Queen Alley to a pedestrian mall, and any other ideas that our citizens might come up with as being what they consider to be high priority, things that would be amenities to improve this city or its citizens. The new council might also consider a reduction in property taxes once our high priority capital requirements are met. And that will be...but the difficult part for Counsel is what's a high priority requirement and what should be a tax cut. There are other issues not the subject of my resolutions that Counsel should address, namely transparency and budgetary control. As a new member of city council, I was concerned that our workshops, although open to the public, discourage public participation. Few of the public ever showed up even though important guidance was given to the city manager in these meetings. I made sure that Norma from the Courier attended and reported on each of the workshops. That was my first line of attack. But then I asked that we no longer have workshops but they all be special meetings, which has the advantage of having minutes taken. However, minutes are not verbatim records of meetings and can be very much abbreviated. We had a two-hour discussion of the budget and then the minutes was one paragraph. Okay? The ultimate solution, in my humble opinion, is that every city council meeting, with the exception of execo sessions, be held here with that camera on. So, there is never a question, what council talked about? Are citizens have access to what was said? I applaud, also during this last election, both Carol Harvey and Noel Sawyer committed to holding regular town hall meetings, more used to the Facebook, social media, to be able to communicate with our citizens. I think that's a very important step and I applaud both of you for doing that. With regard to budgetary control, I have a reputation of being the council member most concerned with our annual budget, going every line item with a fine-tooth comb. Both Carol and Noel have volunteered, I think, to take that mantle on, hopefully some of our new members too. But I would offer for your consideration those two line items that I brought up last year, the school resource officer and the animal control officer. There are other likely opportunities and I leave all of you to find those. Additionally, my other concern was that city council should require the city manager to seek council approval of expenditures that exceed the approved budget appropriation before those expenditures are made rather than after the fact at the end of the year. The only exception to a priority authorization, and that's my only Latin word here, would be for acts of God where emergency repairs are required immediately. So, had I run for council again, these are some of the issues I would have sought to address and I respectfully request my council members or the new council to consider. So, what are my plans? I will remain on the Woodland Aquatic Project Board of Directors, whose main task now shifts from design to fundraising. And in that regard, our major fundraising efforts from individuals will kick off with a groundbreaking ceremony next month. I will also remain on the Main Street Design and Historical Preservation Committee, which is to finding the sculpt to make our Main Street downtown area pedestrian-friendly. I'm also volunteering the man in front desk at the Floreson Fossil Beds National Monument. And so, if you ever visit there, hopefully it's on the day I'm at the desk. I have my interview with him tomorrow. But I love and I'm even thinking of volunteering at our own visitor's center here because I love to meet people from out of town and introduce them to our lovely city. Finally, I'm in training to walk the Camino de Santiago, a thousand-year-old, 500-mile-long pilgrim trail across northern Spain this coming September and October. And so, in closing, I wish Mayor Levy and council members, both new and old, both wisdom and strength as you seek to make Woodland Park a better place to live. I also thank the city manager and his staff for all their support, which in many cases went beyond what council members normally request. And I thank the citizens who made the wise choices in the recent election that also gave me the opportunity to serve this city, my city, for the last four years. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Phil, would you like to come forward please? I think this is a good spot and we'll give Counsel a chance to make some comments after. But certainly, on the behalf of all our citizens, the staff, all of city council, everyone in our community really appreciates your time and your effort, your brilliance, and your willingness. And we couldn't have done it without you. We really appreciate all you've done for us and best of luck to you in the future.
My thanks. Thank you Mr. Mayor and thank you Counsel and citizens.
And Phil, if you would please deliver these to your wife for us. We know that she sacrifices so that you can give to the community.
Thank you Connie.
He got one already.
All right. Mr. Carlson? Oh, this is perfect. Drawing of the Woodland Aquatic Project. And once again, Bob, thanks for everything you've done. Your passion is what makes you such a great addition to our community. You never led us down where the pool was concerned and it will be one of your legacies. So, thanks very much for all you've done and best of luck to you. I cannot believe you're walking 500 miles in Spain. But best of luck to you.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll deliver these to Linda.
Okay, good. So, before we move forward, I thought Counsel my mercy, anybody like to make any comments relative to our two outgoing council members?
Ken?
Well, I guess just impromptu, I'd like to thank both of them for their time and their effort. I think it's so important in a small community that we have to be involved. You know, we work here, we live here, and to donate some time, to volunteer in some groups, to get involved in any way you can is very, very important. And it feels so good internally to be involved and you can see the difference you make. And these two gentlemen have done that and gotten involved and I encourage others here to do the same. Thank you to both of you.
Thanks Ken.
So, it was kind of interesting when I was training for my marathons, I'd be running every morning and sure enough, I'd run into Phil, walking his dog, like every morning, exact same time, exact same place. And we would stop and literally we would talk for 30 minutes about...I wasn't on council yet, but we would just talk about things and we got along very well. So, I knew Phil before I got on council. Thank you Phil. He's given me some guidance for sure and made me understand how processes work. And so, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
I appreciate it. And I'll probably see him on the trail again for my next 5K. Now, Bob, Bob's another story. So, I get on council and he lives up the street from me and he comes over one day, he's walking down with his dog and he goes...I go, "Hey, Bob, if you see my garage open, because my office is in the garage, say come on in." That was mistake number one. So, Bob would walk his dog, see my garage come in and we'd have like two-hour-long discussions. But I learned so much from this man about the city, about budgets, about things to look for outside of what we normally look at. And he helped me learn a lot. So, thank you very much Bob. I appreciate it. And my garage is open. Spring is here. I would be walking my dog regularly and if the doors open, I'm gonna close it if I see that. But Lenny knows, when I'm not home in a half hour, I've been talking to Noel.
Thank you Bob.
I don't want to cry. And I don't want to say goodbye to either one of you because I know I'm gonna go to both of you over the next four years and ask for advice whether you respond or not. I don't know.
I will.
I certainly hope you do. We didn't get to know each other for very long, but I respect your opinion, in true admiration of your knowledge of what our founding fathers intended for our country. I look forward to our conversations in the future. And that's the same for me. You know that all you do is give me a call and tell me where you think I need to look at the budget because I will never catch every decimal point that you caught. And as I said, I don't want to say goodbye, but thank you.
Thank you.
Carol and I are way back. Well, not...it was January 2012. She was the treasurer or secretary?
Yeah, that's...
By the Woodland Aquatic Board of Directors, but she mentioned she was gonna run for city council in April because nobody was running. And I said, "Hey, I'm gonna run too. This is a civic duty." Besides which, it might be another vote for the project. But mostly it was a civic duty. And I'm so glad that this election was contested. There were so many ran against for the position. So, that's a big thing, okay? And it's been great working with you over those intervening years and we'll keep working on it.
Bob is really one of a kind and I can echo Noel's comments because he and I have talked, oh, seems like many hours after council meetings, out of the dark, either out that way or out the other way. He's left a wonderful legacy, the Aquatic Center, not that he's solely responsible for it. But many of you may not know how persistent Bob has been in our other sessions where we've talked the Aquatic Center. And this is success, wonderful legacy that you're leaving. I happen to think every city council meets a Bob Carlson. He does look at the budget, line item by line item. And because I know he's doing that, I don't worry as much. And so, when Bob raises a question, it's always a good question and generally he gets a good answer. Or if he doesn't, he's very persistent about finally getting to that spot. Well done Bob.
Thank you John.
Phil, I don't know as well. We all know he's bright and articulate. He and I haven't always agreed on topics, the recent election being one of those. I used to think I had a decent vocabulary, but after listening to Phil, I will have to say that there have been many times I've gone to the dictionary after I've read something that Phil has written or said. And one of those words was "exegesis". And I said, "What on earth is that?" And so, Phil at times I think uses words that are a little higher in the vocabulary than unless the rest of us are used to use them.
Thank you John.
Phil's a good man. He's made a great contribution here and we'll see and hear more from him in the community, I'm sure. Maybe regarding some of our discussions and decisions, perhaps not. But well done Phil.
Thank you John. Appreciate it.
Do you need a cream for that word? Exegesis.
How about explanation? Will that do? Okay. Well, thank you all. Thanks very much. I think it's time we move forward and Suzanne will take care of this, but I know that Val and Paul are here and Carol and I all need to...
I'm gonna call each one of you at a time.
Great. Thanks Suzanne.
I think it's time with you.
Okay. Thank you.
I, Neil Levy, solemnly swear by the ever-living God that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Colorado and faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor for the city of Woodland Park upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations. Do any sound events of the South Lake Dalkar to your name? Sir, raise your right hand and enter my Dalkar. Do you solemnly swear by the ever-living God that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Colorado and faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member for the city of Woodland Park upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations sir.
Val, you're welcome to take your seat up here. How are you up here? No. No.
Carol, please ask her to repeat. Raise your right hand and enter. I, Carol Harvey, do solemnly swear by the ever-living God that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Colorado and faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member for the city of Woodland Park upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Right hand. Paul, and they could call you up to join me. Sir, raise your right hand and, for the right entering, I Paul Sonnier
I Paul Sonnier
Do you solemnly swear
Do you solemnly swear
By the ever-living God
By the ever-living God
That I will support the Constitution
I will support the Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States
And of the State of Colorado
And of the State of Colorado
And faithfully perform the duties
And faithfully perform the duties
Of council member
Of council member
For the city of Woodland Park
For the city of Woodland Park
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Right hand. Thank you.
you to our council. We're excited to have you. I will give you something that you can wear to council meetings or not, but this is the City of Woodland Park pen. And as my grandmother would say, wear it in good health, and welcome to city council.
Oh, jeez. I'm a made man. I got my button now.
You got your button.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to item number five C. And before we move forward, we need to have a show of hands, if you'd like. In terms of how we select the mayor pro temp, and then also the appointments to the various boards, if council, would you like to do this as a voice vote, or would you like to do it as a paper vote? We can make that decision for the next two issues now, if you'd like, or we can do one at a time. But do you have a preference? I always prefer the secret vote with the paper. Okay? Which I couldn't get into on board of adjustments, but maybe here.
Okay. We're talking for the mayor pro temp.
We'll be talking for the, all the appointments that we make. But we can go mayor pro temp first.
I see nothing wrong with the voice. These are just for the committees.
Yeah, I see.
Oops. There's nothing secret about this.
No. Okay, for mayor pro temp? Okay.
Just one point of clarification, if I could, and it truly is a matter of semantics. But the vote in and of itself will not be secret. You will be acknowledged for who you voted for in this process, but it's just that it's not done as a voice vote.
Yeah.
For my clarification, did I hear you say mayor will be by paper ballot, and the committees and boards will be by voice?
I'm glad you asked, because I'm not sure.
I couldn't.
I see nothing wrong with voice for everything. We're not here to hide anything, are we?
I agree.
We're not hiding.
Yeah.
Let's not introduce immediately hiding. That's not what would be happening. It would be a road tour that would take place, and each of you would be acknowledged for your vote. So there's nothing being hidden.
That's right.
Your vote, your vote is either by voice
Or by ballot.
Or by ballot that is read into the record. That's your discussion, and you get to decide that.
Voice is fine, guys.
May I make a motion?
Please do.
I motion that we elect Noel.
That's what, hold on a second.
Oh, okay.
You're a little bit ahead.
Okay.
A little bit ahead. Let's make one decision here first.
Okay.
Voice vote. Okay. Is anyone good with the voice vote?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Then in terms of selection of mayor pro temp, I've got a few words, and then you could be next, Mr. Sonnier. I say this to people that know, and I came into this office very, very inexperienced. I had not been on city council, city planning, nothing. I've been a member of our community that has attended a number of council meetings, maybe could count them on two hands. So the point is, the lady on my right, our current mayor pro temp, Carol Harvey, has been an absolute rock for me. She has helped lead me through meetings, in and out of council sessions. And honestly, I probably wouldn't be sitting here today without her help, her experience, her knowledge, and her brilliance also. So I want to start this by nominating Carol Harvey for mayor pro temp. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Any discussion? Paul, if you'd like to make another motion, you're certainly welcome to.
I just wanted to get the ball rolling.
Okay.
You can make a motion for me.
We have a, we have a motion on the floor right now. How should we proceed?
Well, I'm checking to see. You've made a motion, and there's been a second. I need, I'm checking with the attorney to see if we vote now, or if we hear other, other motions.
I have to make a motion by voice, though?
Yes. My recollection in the past is we've received all nominations, and then closed nominations, and we vote on the nominations.
Okay. That's what I remember. Thank you. So Paul, I'll give the floor to you.
Again, I'll make motion that Noel be considered as vice mayor.
Mayor pro temp?
Mayor pro temp. Yes.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It sounds good. Anything else? Okay, so the nomination part of this is now closed. Now we can have discussion. If anybody would like to add anything to what I say, or to Paul's say, or Carol, and Noel should obviously have a chance to speak too. So Carol, you want to start? Would you like to say?
No, I'm honored by your nomination, and I would be pleased to serve again as the mayor pro temp.
Okay.
Well, I'll speak up. I worked with both these people a little bit, well, mostly Carol, really. And Noel, fine gentleman, he had the guts to actually go up and challenge a very incumbent mayor, well-known in the town. So I'm happy that Mr. Sonnier has put his name in nomination along with Carol. In my book, I'm fine with, I'm good with both, so it's a good thing for me. But I recognize Noel's ambition with, or enthusiasm, I should say, and I was real proud of the efforts he put forward, as well as Mr. Levy and Carol, and working with you in the past. It's been a pleasure.
Anybody else? Ken? Well, I would just say in the last couple of years that I've been involved in working with Carol as mayor pro temp in the past. I've been very impressed, and we're very, very fortunate to have her. And I mean, I just can't express how fortunate we are to have her and the work that she's done. I know Noel, I've gotten to know him, he can do a good job as well. Both are good candidates. But I think the background that Carol has in doing this before, and we still have a lot of major issues in this community, I think will be very valuable. So I really, really have to lead a little bit to Carol. Sorry, Noel.
Sounds like American Idol.
Yeah. Do we have vote cards or something? That's all.
Noel, you have any comment?
I do not. It was, the community knows me. They know my passion for this community. And my opportunity to, to really work with the community, and that's why I was looking to be mayor pro temp. Thank you.
John, would you like to comment?
No.
Okay.
All votes.
Sounds good.
And so just for the two that have been nominated, you certainly need to vote. You have that ability to do so. And so what we will do is we will do a voice vote. All those in favor of, and those in favor will raise your hand, and we'll make a record of that. All those in favor of, and we'll do that if it's necessary. And we'll do it in the order of nominations. And Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to continue with this, if you'd like.
I would love you to.
Okay. Madam Attorney, is all good?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor of Harvey as mayor pro temp, please raise your hands. Okay, let the record reflect. Neil Levy, Carol Harvey, Ken Matthews, Paul Sonnier, and John Schaefer. Congratulations, mayor pro temp.
Thank you. And thank you for allowing me to serve again.
Great. Thank you all. Thank you all. One thing I forgot to mention, which is critical, there's a number of times where the mayor is not available. And so the mayor pro temp has stood in for me on any number of occasions. And most times I hear from people that she did a lot better job than the mayor did. And so we appreciate everything that she does. Okay, we'll move on to the discussion and the appointment of city council members to the various boards. This was in your packet. I think you all have it. And we'll just go, we'll go line by line, I guess. We're gonna start with the Historic Preservation Committee. And new council members, I will inform you how this works. If you'd like to be on these committees, you'll have your opportunity today. So you can speak up if you have a favorite one, or one that you want to be a part of. And Phil was not a member of any of the committees, because he had other prior range, prior obligations. And so that's also a, an opportunity for you. So it's not mandatory, but it gives you certainly a great opportunity to continue to serve our community. So all of us enjoy what we're doing right now. I know that. So we'll start with Historic Preservation Committee, and our liaison now is Carol Harvey. And you know, I'll kind of start, we already have that liaison, and start in that direction and go from there. If you'd like to continue, or what you would like.
I would like to continue unless either of the two new members are interested in the Historic Preservation Committee. It meets once a month on the first Monday of the month. And I have learned so much about the community just by being on that committee, and our history, obviously. But this is a big year. This is the 125th anniversary of the city. And if either one of you are interested in being a part of that, and part of what the Preservation Committee is doing, I would defer. If not, I'd love to continue doing it.
Great. Anyone else?
No.
Does that sound good? Okay, if that's the case, I guess we're gonna have to have a voice vote. Mr. Butler, are you still reading these things?
We can do a motion and.
Okay.
Take a vote.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay. So I'm of the approval of Carol Harvey continuing on the Historic Preservation Committee.
Second.
Second. Suzanne?
Thank you. Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. Next, Ken Matthews can talk about Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee.
Yes, I've been on that committee for two years and thoroughly enjoy it. We had a meeting this past Monday night, which you'll hear about later. There's fifteen people there. It's very active, with various issues clean up in the city. Soon to come up, as you'll hear about, is cleaning up our cemetery, and some of the colored benches you've seen around town. Anything that can help beautify this city. And we've got the school involved, the school kids involved, litter pickup, trash recycling, all those kinds of things. And I enjoy being there. And again, as Carol said, I'd be happy to continue in that, but if somebody else has a passion for that, I'd be happy to pass that on.
Anybody else? Okay, then we'll call for motion.
Move to reappoint Mr. Matthews to the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee.
Second.
Sounds good. Suzanne?
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. We'll move on to the DDA Board of Directors. And now there's Noel, a member of that, but he's the vice chair. So Noel, why don't you speak to that?
I'd like to stay on the DDA. We've made some amazing progress with our city and transparency. I'm also the vice chair, and I'd like to stay on the vice chair. I'd like to stay on the DDA.
Sounds good. Anybody? Any questions, any thoughts?
Move to appoint, we appoint Mr. Sawyer to the DDA Board of Directors.
Second.
Suzanne?
Thank you. Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we'll move on to the Hikes Peak Area Council of Government Board of Directors. And I represent us on that board. It is probably my, some of my most enjoyable times being, being mayor. I get to sit with other council members, other mayors, certainly the county commissioners, and city council of Colorado Springs, and help determine where a lot of money is spent, mostly on aging and transportation. And so it's a, it's a great honor to be there. I would love to continue in that regard.
I'd just like to say that Mayor Levy has done a great job on PPACG, and I really recommend that he stays there. There will be a backup, which I am. I'm willing to give that up to anybody who would like to experience other governments. But I do recommend that Mayor Levy stay on PPACG.
Thanks, Noel.
You're welcome.
Who would like to then be part of this as being kind of the alternate, when I can't make it, or you're certainly welcome to come to meetings you wouldn't get to phone, is all. Ken?
In the previous council section, I was in for two years. I was on PPACG. So I would be interested in being a backup. That would be fine, if I can help out in that way.
Sounds great. I tried to make that meeting, but I think I've made every one, actually. But there's, you know, you never know. But that would be great. Anyone else?
So the motion would be to reappoint the mayor to the PP, PP?
ACG.
ACG.
And the alternate?
Do we have to appoint the alternate tonight?
No, we don't have to.
Well.
But we can.
Can it be in the same?
We certainly can, absolutely.
And can it be in the same motion?
Yes.
All right, then I would amend my motion then to include Mayor Levy and Mr. Matthews as the alternate.
Second. I'll second. Suzanne?
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, the next is Utility Advisory Committee. And before I hand it over to John, I'll say this. I've been a member since I became the mayor. And I've learned so much from Kip and everybody at Utilities. It's been, it's just been phenomenal. I say this only barely in jest. I thought, you know, it rained, and then it ended up somehow at your faucet. I literally knew nothing about how we guard the water, how it's distributed, and just any number of things that I've learned. That said, I'm really busy. And so that's something that I could get away from, and it would be great for, I think, one of the new council members. But I'll have John speak to it, because he's a great member of that committee, too.
The committee meets once a month, as required. There are about eight of us involved, Neil and I, and some other, what I'll call at-large folks. Kip sets the agenda. We talk about capital projects, for example. We talk about, he does an annual well-known spreadsheet that we use to justify rates and changes and the like. Like Neil, I have been educated by Kip with respect to the water system. And we got to take a trip with Neil up to the Independence Basin and look at how the water actually gets from that basin to Twin Lakes and into our system. You turn the faucet on, and you've got clean water. Wonderful description, Neil. I have enjoyed participating with that group, and I'd like to stay active.
Yeah, it's really fun.
But I think it would be a good idea if Val or Paul, if they have some interest to join the Television Advisory Committee.
I have an interest. I would have an interest in it.
Sounds good.
I'm waiting for the community investment thing, which I have a huge, long-term interest in, so.
That sounds perfect, then. Well, the motion.
A motion then to appoint Mr. Schaefer, or reappoint Mr. Schaefer, and to add Mr. Sonnier as our second council representative.
Second.
We're okay with that? One motion? Terrific. Suzanne?
Thank you. Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Suzanne. Paul, you'll really, you'll really enjoy what you're gonna do. And the tour reference by John Schaefer is a must. It's just a plus.
Sure. Matthews?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks Suzanne. Paul, you'll really enjoy what you're gonna do, and the tour reference by John Shaffer is a must, it's just a show. And I just thank Kip again for everything that you've imparted on me, it's just been amazing. I think I've learned more about utilities than anything over this last year and a half or so, and a lot of it's because of you, so thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Park and Rec Advisory Board, and there currently is nobody on that board.
I'd like to just say on behalf of Cindy Keating, who is the Parks and Recreation Director, she really wants a council liaison, she hasn't had one, so she would appreciate anyone that would be willing to step up for that.
Yeah, I think it's important, we'd like to do that.
I'll reluctantly step up. My wife was on that board, and she's warned me of a lot of some things, but I'll be happy to. I have a high interest in green space and Parks and Rec, so.
Well, you say you love it, I'm an old basketball coach in the South. If you're kidding about reluctantly, then I think that's great. If you're not, I would, I would like to sit on that board, too, but if you want to, I would, I mean, I would certainly defer to you, that's just something that makes sense for me. And the only reason I'm saying this is because you said reluctantly. But if you're just kidding, then it's all yours.
Enthusiastically.
Enthusiastically. Now, Val Carr is our liaison to the Park and Rec Advisory Board. Second.
Sorry.
Great. Thank you Suzanne.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, next, I want you to talk about community investment.
For the benefit of two new members, then, the Community Investment Fund Committee receives funds from the city every year, every calendar year, generally ranging from twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. There's an application process, nonprofits can request funds from the city, and those applications come in at the end of October, and there will be one or two meetings in November and December. And the committee decides which of those applicants will receive funding, and how much, out of whatever the pot is, thirty thousand, say. I've been on the committee for four years, and I'm ready to yield my position to whoever would like it, and Val has expressed an interest, so that would work well.
Thank you. I have actually been heavily involved with this committee from an application standpoint for about ten years, up until about two years ago, so I quit doing it for various arts organizations and other nonprofits in town, and have been, so I know this process very well, and I would be happy to volunteer for sitting on that.
Good.
So you want to be on three?
Three.
As if you want to do the other one.
Oh, the one we talked about.
Yeah.
Sure. I have a presentation, there's a one that's not on here that I thought I would throw out for discussion later, when we're done.
Well, then I would like to make a motion to nominate Val Carr for the Community Investment Fund Review Committee.
Second. Thank you Suzanne.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, the next is the Special Investigation Fund Committee, reviewing expenditures of property.
I didn't even know we had it.
And I didn't either, and that's why I'm reading this. Bob Carlson was our liaison. Does anyone have interest in this, and is this one that we need, we would prefer to have one?
It meets infrequently, but I'll let the chief speak to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a fund that's not used very often. Often, currently, there's about six thousand dollars in this fund. It's been saved for something specifically related to drug enforcement or investigative-related expenses, so we have not had a need up until recently where we need some radios for it, therefore, I would need a person to help make this, to help put it in compliance so we can actually use this money, so.
It's fairly clear the revenue stream is from seized property, and then the sale of that, or the use of its value, and then its utilization. I can only recall a handful of times that this committee's needed to meet, so it's extremely infrequently.
I would have an interest. That's good enough for me.
Then I will make a motion to nominate Mr. Sonier.
Second.
Special Investigation Fund Committee.
Great Suzanne.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you Suzanne. Okay, the last one on my list is the Main Street Committee that Bob Carlson was also an active part of. That committee meets bi-monthly, first and third Tuesday of each month at three o'clock.
I have interest in that.
I knew you would. Anybody else? That kind of fits hand in hand with DDA.
The DDA, correct.
It works well. Okay. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that Noel Sawyer, P D Main Street Committee, is on second of the council.
Sounds good. Thank you Suzanne.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, the next is the Special Investigation Fund Committee, reviewing expenditures of property.
I didn't even know we had it.
And I didn't either, and that's why I'm reading this. Val Carr is our liaison. Does anyone have interest in this, and is this one that we need, we would prefer to have one?
It meets infrequently, but I'll let the chief speak to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a fund that's not used very often. Often, currently, there's about six thousand dollars in this fund. It's been saved for something specifically related to drug enforcement or investigative-related expenses, so we have not had a need up until recently where we need some radios for it, therefore, I would need a person to help make this, to help put it in compliance so we can actually use this money, so.
It's fairly clear the revenue stream is from seized property, and then the sale of that, or the use of its value, and then its utilization. I can only recall a handful of times that this committee's needed to meet, so it's extremely infrequently.
I would have an interest. That's good enough for me.
Then I will make a motion to nominate Mr. Sonier.
Second.
Special Investigation Fund Committee.
Great Suzanne.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you Suzanne. Okay, the last one on my list is the Main Street Committee that Bob Carlson was also an active part of. That committee meets bi-monthly, first and third Tuesday of each month at three o'clock.
I have interest in that.
I knew you would. Anybody else? That kind of fits hand in hand with DDA.
The DDA, correct.
It works well. Okay. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that Noel Sawyer, P D Main Street Committee, is on second of the council.
Sounds good. Thank you Suzanne.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, I have an additional item that I'd like to just throw out for discussion in regard to these committees.
Let's do that.
Just briefly.
Please.
I have extraordinary, a, a lot of people I know out at Caris. Caris is gonna be a big part of our community, one way or another. I was, I was thinking, and in fact, they're actually interested in this, in having a city council liaison to them. It's not listed in these committees here, but kind of in the spirit of the PPACG sort of interface thing. So I would suggest that maybe we want to consider having a Caris liaison. I know it's a special entity, but it's gonna be a huge part of our community. They have some interest in this, and my discussions with them, I would be interested in being that liaison, whatever that means.
Okay, that sounds good. I don't know what the process is either, so ask Mr. Butter.
You know, this is, in my tenure, it's not come up to add a committee or to actually remove a committee, so I don't know what that process is. I can tell you that your staff meets very frequently with Caris, not necessarily on speed dial, but I spoke with their chief operating officer just a couple of days ago, and I do that. Certainly, if council wants to do that, we'll pursue that opportunity to see, you know, we just need to look to see what that would be. I would want to really understand what your intent is, what's the mission, if it's operational discussions, that's kind of in our venue on this side of the table. We don't have an, there's no, for Utilities Advisory, there's a utility department, we don't have a Caris department. We work with all the departments with Caris, but we can certainly flesh out the process so the council can then make a decision on if it's something that you wanted to pursue. But I, as I asked you many times, if this is not something that the council wants to pursue as with consensus, I'd rather not run down a rabbit trail that I don't need to. So perhaps we could just get consensus on whether or not you want us to pursue even looking into it.
Well, I'd, I'd be interested in hearing what thoughts Val might have with respect to what he thinks you might be involved in with Caris as a city council liaison.
One of the concerns, I have quite a few friends and people I know out there, is miscommunication, and granted, staff and Mr. Butter are intimately involved with those kind of things anyway. The people I've talked to are interested in, for instance, I went down a path where they're, you know, "Oh, Woodland Park hates this growth," and stuff like that. I kind of settled that all down, because, "Wait a minute, blah, blah, blah." So it's kind of a, kind of an ambassadorship kind of thing. And we representing the public on council would be, would be my thought there, is kind of an ambassadorship kind of thing. I don't know how else to.
I would be curious, though, what the legal ramifications would be, if there's a precedence for a city council to have that type of a relationship with a nonprofit, or with an institution of higher learning. Is there, you know, something that we could base that on in some other municipality, but I would imagine there would be some consideration in singling out one nonprofit organization and at the exclusion of another.
You know, there are some municipalities that have established universities, they're often referred to as town and gown cities, and of the ones that I'm aware of, I'm not aware of a formal relationship. There certainly are informal relationships where people meet and they discuss things and they, they make decisions. And we, as a staff, are prepared to do that.
I think my inclination would be to examine whether or not we could do that in a formal way, if not, we would certainly want to invite Caris as often as necessary for information briefings here in council.
May I speak now?
You may.
I believe it's extremely important that we have a relationship with Caris, that we explore this a little bit further, not to make a decision tonight, but to explore it a little bit further to get a better understanding of what this relationship would be. And with council's advice, and this council, we could move forward on that and discuss it a little bit further to get a better understanding. But I believe it would be wise for the council to consider communications with Caris because of the size of Caris, the importance of the school to this community, the population that it's bringing in, the complications that come with that population growth, and I believe it's extremely important just to have a relationship there.
Let me just say this, I have a great relationship. I've worked with Andrew O'Mack since he's been here, starting on, when I was the chairman of the Board of Chamber of Commerce, got to know him very, very well. We speak and have lunch on many occasions. Gary Lukey and Chris Sees, who operate the college, are now good friends, and we communicate on a number of occasions. And so, you know, I would certainly be interested in that. I don't know that this is the time to decide, but to what you said, I think we need something like that. I don't know how formal it needs to be. This is not, as David alluded to, a city department, if you will, and so we have to treat it a little bit differently, but I think it's a great thought, and in the meantime, we'll get some more information and then consider to talk about it.
Well, that's good, because I don't understand the relationship that you have, and so not having all the pieces, having the discussion is very informative to me, to get a better understanding of.
If I could just, we don't have a formal liaison relationship with many entities within the city. And I'm not trying to argue not doing this, but we don't have a formal liaison relationship with the school district, with the fire district, with the ambulance district, even with Teller County, but we meet frequently and have discussions, and many of you are involved in those discussions. We don't have, you know, a liaison relationship with Walmart. We do it at the staff level. All the things that have been mentioned about traffic and growth and population, we deal with those things at the staff level and then bring them to the council for your decisions. So just, we'll look into it, we'll see what the, what the intent is, but I would really like to understand, what's the desired outcome? With all these others, we have a desired outcome. It's a liaison, it's communication, and perhaps that communication piece is something that we need to do a better job. The Chamber of Commerce has an excellent relationship with them, and the Board of Directors of the Chamber gets an update almost monthly on things that are happening. We post calendar events, we notify the businesses of things that are coming. So just point me in the direction that you want me to go and turn us loose, and we'll be happy to accomplish that. just a great thing for us to see because that's who we are, and we encourage everybody to continue to be a part of the community. And David always says his door is wide open, and it really is. So, for people that have complaints or people that like things that go on, we'd love to hear from all of you. And if any of you have the time, we'd love to have you on many committees that we have available. So, hats off to everybody in our community for this last city election. I know we'll hear more about that in a little bit. Okay, we're gonna move on. There are no additions, deletions, or corrections, and we'll enter the consent calendar. Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening on the consent calendar, we have one item, and that is the order of the minutes of the March seventeenth regular council meeting.
Okay. Any questions, John? Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Great, Suzanne?
Thank you. Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sanyer?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
I mean, I wasn't here, but yes, I guess. I don't know. You can understand.
He can go on the, he can go on the advice. Probably have it.
Okay, I'll do that. Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion, Caris unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, ordinances on initial posting. It looks like I just turned it over to Kip Riley for a while.
Just before Kip starts, for the benefit of our two new council members, you're gonna hear primarily from Kip this evening on several water and wastewater issues. And I just wanna talk to you a little bit about the process. We're gonna have an orientation, but you're coming into this meeting tonight with a couple of things that are probably new to you, this initial posting process and the public hearing process. So, historically, what we do for the initial posting is the staff member will introduce the subject to you, provide the barest of briefings associated with it, answer any questions. But your primary responsibility is to hear the initial posting and set the public hearing for a future date. So, you're gonna have two of those tonight. So, Kip's briefing, just so you know upfront, will be relatively short on those two items. But then in nine A, we've already had the initial postings. So, this is where you're jumping on the moving train, and you've had the staff package, you've had a chance to review them. And so, you'll be asked to be part of the decision-making process as it relates to the two ordinances under the public hearings. They're relatively benign, so it should be relatively simple. We'll cook you slowly. Kip, with that, please begin.
Thank you. Ordinance twelve seventy-six is the loan agreement between the City of Woodland Park and the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority in the amount of $6.5 million. Earlier, well, last year, January of 2015, city council approved the first portion of the loan to expand wastewater treatment plant. This is the second portion of that same loan. Wastewater plant expansion applied for funds for a total of $8.5 million. The first $2 million, that was approved back in January of 2015, was at zero percent, and this is the remainder of that $8.5 to $6.5 million at approximately two to three percent. We won't know until those bonds close. There are restrictions with this loan in regards to revenues exceeding expenses by 10 percent. And our bond counsel, Mario Tremblin, is actually here tonight to answer any questions you guys have in regards to the loan agreement. Recommend approval of ordinance twelve seventy-six on initial posting and set the public hearing for April 21st, 2016. Any questions?
John? This loan is still going to be piggybacked on an Evans loan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's proceeding?
Yes, I can elaborate a little bit on that. Because this is a smaller loan, if you will, we are not large enough to go to the bond market by ourselves, and we have to piggyback with another larger entity or a larger entity that has a larger loan amount. So, yes, Evans is still going through, and we're piggybacking with them. We've been told that we won't be able to, there won't be another issuance of bonds for another year, and it's just a little too far out for us, so we are trying to piggyback with Evans, Colorado.
Okay. What's the schedule?
Schedule in regards to the funding or the funding? I don't know the details on the exact schedule.
Okay.
Mario, maybe you'll answer that up.
Welcome, Mr. Tremblin. Just give us your name and address, it would be great.
Certainly, certainly. My name is Mario Tremblin. I'm with the firm of Q-Tech Rock, the city's bond counsel. And I've appeared before this body before, and this time I'm prepared and know the cameras there. And if I may, if you'll indulge me, there's one thing I'd like to say, because this is a pretty big night, and I'm always happy when I get to see the squaring in of new council members. First, I want to salute Mr. Miller and Mr. Carlson, and welcome Mr. Sanyer and Mr. Kesar Carr. My grandmother, passed away recently, used to tell me, if you wanna get anywhere in life, start at home. And this is your home. So, thank you. So, back to the question. As far as the funding process goes, there has been approval by the CFR PDA Board of Directors. The Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority is the actual issuing entity. And the other one that's being piggybacked or that's being combined with this one, they're both being funded from an issuance of authority debt. The proceeds of that authority debt is gonna be used to fund both of these orders. The schedule so far, once we have approval of the ordinance after a public hearing, will open the door for final negotiation of the terms of the loan agreement, which will not exceed the parameters set in ordinance twelve seventy-six. Right now, returning a close of, I believe, May, it's even the May first, or is it May first? Okay. Thank you, very much. Mario Parker in crime. We're looking at a close of May first, or thereabouts.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Okay. Any questions? Like David alluded to, this is just to consider on initial posting, we'll have the public hearing two weeks from today. If not, then call for motion to consider ordinance number twelve seventy-six. I move approval of ordinance twelve seventy-six as presented. Second. Okay, discussion. Okay, Suzanne?
Thank you. Matthews?
Yes.
Sanyer?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion, Caris unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, Kip, if you'd like to continue?
Okay, ordinance twelve seventy-seven runs parallel with twelve seventy-six. As I mentioned in ordinance twelve seventy-six, part of the loan requirement is revenues exceeding expenses by the 10 percent. Ordinance twelve seventy-seven establishes a new wastewater capital replacement fee to meet those loan requirements. We are gonna be scheduling a work session with council on April 21st, right before the next council. We need to go through why we came to the number we came to. The utilities advisory committee has already reviewed. This recommendation has approved it to council. They recommend it for approval to council, but we'll have that work session so you can understand better how we got to that. And I'd also like to add that this is a rate increase for existing customers. Also, what you will see in April 21st is an increase in wastewater plant investment fees to also help contribute towards this loan. I recommend approval of ordinance twelve seventy-seven on initial posting and set the public hearing for April 21st. Any questions?
Any questions for Kip? Move to approve then, ordinance number twelve seventy-seven, and set the public hearing for April 21st.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Sanyer?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion, Caris unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we'll move on to number nine A of public hearings and consider ordinance number twelve fifty-eight.
Thank you. I'd like to discuss agenda items nine A and B together, and I'm just asking you guys to vote separately on both those ordinances. The reason I would like to talk them all together is because they both serve the same purpose. Ordinance twelve fifty-eight and twelve fifty-nine are accepting easements for sewer main for the project for the assisted living facility. A sewer main will need to be extended from the lot just south of Walmart, crosses underneath Highway 24, and continues east through the old Tweeds building to service the assisted living facility. Both these lots have been surveyed, provided to us, and both owners have provided grants of easements to those property, to each property. I recommend approval of ordinance twelve fifty-eight and twelve fifty-nine. If you have any questions?
Very straightforward. Any questions?
One question. Will it require a lift, or will this simply be a?
This will be a gravity main, an eight-inch gravity main that would be abhorring, basically, in that open trench construction.
It goes to an existing lift, doesn't it?
It will. It'll flow from the east side of Highway 24 towards the Walmart lift station, which then is lifted up to the Woodland Village lift station, which is then lifted up to the south side lift station, the main south side, which then pushes it over the divide to the wastewater treatment plant.
Any other questions? We are in public comment now, and if anybody have any questions or comments from the audience? If not, we'll call for motion. First to consider, ordinance number twelve fifty-eight. I move approval of ordinance twelve fifty-eight as presented.
Second.
First though, second, Suzanne?
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sanyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion, Caris unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, one more time to consider, ordinance twelve fifty-nine. Move to approve, ordinance twelve fifty-nine as presented.
Second.
Suzanne?
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sanyer?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion, Caris unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Thanks, Kip. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to new business, which we have none of tonight. And so, public comment on items on this agenda, and I have a couple of societies tonight. Let's start with Carol Green Street.
Carol Green Street, 311 First Lane, Woodland Park. I just wanted to come to all of you and thank you so much from the Board of Education and the Woodland Park School District for agreeing to put our ballot issue on this April ballot. We know that you may have had some reservations about it, but you were willing to let the voters look at it and speak for themselves. Also, I know that the timing was not so great. We came to you first, right in the middle of the discussions about the Aquatic Center, and I'm certain that some of you were concerned that the community would see that there was maybe something underhanded going on. We had our own concerns about that, but we stepped forward and did what we felt like was the right thing, and I believe you all did too. We are so, so grateful to all of you and to the citizens of Woodland Park. If you heard me speak at all close to the election, you might have heard me say I was cautiously optimistic. I was cautiously optimistic that we would get 51 percent of the vote. And so, we were very pleased and overwhelmed with the way that it turned out. And I just wanted to come and thank you all. It wouldn't have gotten there to that point without you all being willing to put it on the ballot. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Carol, I just have to say, your board was phenomenal. It was brilliant to come up with the method to start with, to be able to refund some money on one end and in exchange for some monies on the other end. We all know that a sales tax is not gonna pass in our community on its own merit. And so, not only did you create a great ballot measure, but you did a phenomenal job of promoting it, communicating, and I just, I can't imagine anyone doing a better job. So, we appreciate the opportunity to work with you. We're looking for evidence that we did the right thing in the future, and I'm sure that you are too. But just being in the school, everybody's very, very, very excited, if nothing else, because of the support from the community. So, thanks very much. Great, great job. Okay, next up, Deb Miller.
Deputy Mayor Levy and council members, my name's Debbie Miller. I'm the president with the Greater Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce, and I come before you tonight to say congratulations, Mayor Levy, and congratulations, Councilwoman Harvey and Carr and Sanyer. We look forward, from a chamber perspective, to working with you as we move forward. We certainly look at the region from a chamber perspective, but we're certainly based here in Woodland Park, and we look forward to working with you. So, on that note, I also wanna follow up. You might see my little sticker I have on here tonight. So, with interest, I listened to the dialogue earlier, and I wanted to follow up a little bit about the chamber's relationship with Caris. And we've been very active prior to the groundbreaking, being out there with that and working with Andrew, working with his staff. Campus Days is going on right now. We have a booth set up out there. Our number one question is, where can I find housing and where can I go to work? So, we are working with all of the potential students as well. So, I wanted to share that as a part of that and as a part of the chamber doing that, David does sit on our chamber board of directors. So, David is always included into all of those dialogues and conversations going on as things progress. We had the opportunity to include Mayor Levy last December as we took the board of directors out to do a tour of the second phase as well. So, I wanted to assure you that we continue to work with them as a major economic impact in our community, as we do with all the other businesses here, but I wanted to share that with you tonight as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Okay, I don't know if anyone else signed up. Anybody else like to comment this area? Okay, we'll move on to reports and, where's report? I have a bunch of events to make everyone aware of. Saturday, April 9th, Winter's Farmers Market is at the U-Pass Cultural Center. That's from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. A Thursday, the 14th, April Chamber Business Expo, featuring 38 local businesses at the U-Pass Cultural Center, and I'm guessing it sold out as always.
It's free to the public to comment.
There you go. Free is always good. Saturday, April 16th, Path to Recycling Event at the Middle School from 10:00 to 2:00 o'clock. There's a small fee for most items, it says here. And then Tuesday, April 19th, Chamber Business After Hours hosted at the Woodland Country Lodge. Then the last one I have, I have a spoiler for me I've become aware of the last couple of weeks, for the Great Smokeout. And for those of you that know, 4/20 is a popular day for kids in particular to smoke pot. Well, the Saturn Group, which is substance abuse threatening intimidated residents now, have put together a great event. It's gonna be the First Annual Kids and Cops Dodgeball Tournament. So, it should be fun. It's gonna be at Woodland Park High School. The date, it'll be easy to remember, is 4/20. The time will be easy to remember. It's at 4:00. Free barbecue sandwiches, chips and drinks, free shirts and raffle prizes. The intent, I think, is obvious, and hope for a great turnout. And thanks to Marius for your direction and leadership in that regard. That's all I have. And next, Ms. Sartor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing. Nothing. Thanks, Kip. Yeah, I would like to call up one of our very involved people in our community and also a very big person in our committee of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, and is also wearing a beautiful T-shirt tonight for Krabby Tax Night. And I'll let Janay, Renee, rather, report on Keep Woodland Park Beautiful and some of the major events that are coming up.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Renee, 1257 Stacy Lane, Woodland Park. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, our Keep Woodland Park Beautiful cleanup event is coming up, and that's free as well. It's May 21st, and registration begins at 9:00 a.m. It's gonna be at the U-Pass Cultural Center. And then we're gonna also be cleaning up the cemetery. That's a two-day event. It's gonna be June 4th and 5th. We're gonna be there in the morning on Saturday and in the afternoon on Sunday. So, hopefully, you'll be able to come out and help us clean up. On April 15th, we have Krabby Tax Night with Coannis. We're teaming with Ms. Matthews are on that together. That is going to be 5:30 and 6:30 seating at the Cristoa, and you can buy tickets at Vector Bank, Go Tell Liquor, and where else? Cristoa. So, hopefully, we'll see you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel May. It's all right. Thank you. Paul? Do you have anything to say?
I'd just like to thank Paul, and I look forward to working with you and learning the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. No? I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. Joe?
Yes, I have a few comments I'm going to make, and as I am doing that, Suzanne will be passing out reports to you. And the report you're going to be getting is the Affordable Housing Needs Assessment for Teller County. And we started with a group of 10 individuals in January of 2015, and so, we've spent a year-plus out analyzing, collecting data, looking at many sources inside Teller County, and determining what the need is for affordable housing. And we chose to look at the period from 2015 to 2025, so the growth over 10 years from last year to 2025. And I want to announce the members of this steering group because they've worked long and hard and made a great contribution to this final assessment. Barbara Asbury, local realtor and treasurer of Colorado Association of Realtors. Barbara Berger, who at the time was the executive director of the Teller Senior Coalition, she's now a senior consultant. Deborah Downs, city administrator for the city of Victor. Ray DeBois, city administrator, city of Cripple Creek. Brian Flear, whom we all know as the executive director of Economic Development Development Authority. Keith Meyer, a local architect. We all know Sally Riley, she's a member of the steering group. Norm Steen, county commissioner. Jeff Watson, vice chair of the planning commission, and I was the chairperson of the committee. We've identified an urgent need in Teller County for affordable housing. You've heard this sermon from me many times. The numbers point out, and I won't bore you with many of them, but in fact, we need 625 multifamily apartment rental units in Woodland Park today. That says that 625 households are families. They're living somewhere, and what happens is they're living in units that take over 30% of their gross annual income or monthly income, however you want to look at it. And many of those families are paying over 50% of their monthly income. That's a terrible statistic, and that's why I get passionate about the need for affordable housing. If we look out 10 years, we had the state demographer here in April of last year. She showed us a lot of data. One of the things we certainly noticed is that she started out with, say, was telling us, "Gosh, you guys are really getting old faster." And so, if you look at the population in Teller County, seniors are growing rapidly, doubled from 2000 to 2010, doubling again from 2010 to 2020. If you also consider what's going on as you look at the population demographic for Teller County, you'll see a major dip in families that are composed of 20- and 30-year-olds. Those are the kind of folks we would like to track here. If you look at the difficulty that the school district has, for example, when I look at Jade and Carol, they're at recruiting and retaining teachers and staff, a real challenge. And there are those who say, "Well, market rate is the answer. If there's a real demand there, the houses will be built." And that simply hasn't been the case, and so, it's not working in that sense. So, I hope you'll take the time to look at the data and the report, and we're going to decide what do we do next. I am expecting to brief the board of commissioners here in the next couple of weeks at one of their work sessions. We understand that cities do not build housing, but on the other hand, we've got the policies in place and ways to attract developers and investors. To date, the numbers don't work. The financials are not sufficient to attract developers and builders. But unfortunately, the citizens gave us a loud vote in the sense that Section 9.17, in which I was intimately involved and hoping to get approved, failed miserably. So, we've got to find some ways to increase the number of moderately priced units, we call them now, and we hope we can find other ways to attract businesses as well. We need some young families in here. We need business. We need jobs. So, look it over, and I hope we'll be able to use it as a benchmark for moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead Deb. I just wanted to thank everybody who voted for me. We had a nice, clean, non-controversial election this time. I congratulate all the winners and Mr. Tilden, he also ran a, we all ran a nice, clean campaign, which is really refreshing. And I, but I just wanted to say thank you to all the citizens that voted for me. Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
I too. I'm very grateful for the support of the citizens of Woodland Park. I'm just very thankful.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for your service. I think you all enjoyed it. You really do. Okay, well, we don't have you for much longer. We're going to leave you out tonight. The student art for this evening, there we are. Elsie Drummond, that's actually a fifth grader's work, which is amazing, summer elementary school. So, as I always say, you have a number of these, and if you'd like to have them hanging in your business or office, just contact the school administration, and they would love to accommodate you. So, thank you to Elsie Drummond. Okay, next I've got City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a brief report, and that is to support the clerk for the, her leadership, her expertise, and all the hard work that she exhibited for a very well-run election. It's a lot of work, and a lot of details, and she did an excellent job. She had the help of her excellence staff, Deputy City Clerk Miller, and to run an election the way that it was run efficiently, without any problems, goes to her preparedness and her excellence. So, I really thank City Clerk Leclair. I have two council members and one council member, Mayor Navy, and of course, especially Council Member Carr and Council Member Sonya. I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
I have a question, Bill. What are our next steps now with those ballot initiatives that were passed?
And thank you, the charter amendments are self-executing. So, they are self-enabling. There are no next steps with regard to them, other than I will support the city clerk and her work with the codifier so that they are codified correctly in the code. There will be, there will be an extra step per se with regard to the provocation decisions the council will have next year by virtue of the charter amendment that does allow council to make on an annual basis by amendments a decision on how you will give notice. So, there will be some that, that we need to be put into that, and that will require an extra step, but that will happen next year. The only, so the charter amendments, again, as I say, other than the law, when they are self-executing, the tax question passage, there is a next step related to that, and I've been in contact with the school district's council. We will be discussing the terms of the agreement that will set forth the logistics for how that will be collected and turned over to the school district, and we will be bringing that to council in the form of a new government agreement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Aaron. Okay, next is the city manager's report.
Brian has a quick update, and then I've got a few things that aren't on the agenda. I won't take much time at all. Brian?
Congratulations, Mayor Levy, and our new council member Sonya, and Carr, and Harvey. Welcome again to, obviously, you've got a sense of the dynamic community we have. For our new members, I represent the Downtown Development Authority as well as Economic Development Interest of the city, and also Main Street. Darlene Jensen, who is our Main Street coordinator, if you haven't met Darlene, you will. A very dynamic group in the Main Street Board. Welcome, Councilman Sawyer, to the, to the Board, and we look forward to having you involved as well. Couple of issues, just to bring to note relative to the DDA. The Board has met with our finance subcommittee and also a Board meeting today to continue discussions. For our new members, the DDA has a debt to the city of $1,184,000. Now, that debt has to be recast as of the previous, the existing agreement as of June of this year. Now, we had some very interesting conversation today, and we'll be bringing it, working with the city manager to bring that to council. Hopefully, that'll have some positive and significant impacts moving forward. Also, we received a formal request from both the Fire District and Ambulance District on a revenue share model. The finance subcommittee of the DDA and the Board decided this year they would not take any action, but they would in earnest look at revisiting that request in 2017, prior to the 2017 budget. And it's, it was a spirited debate. I don't want to suggest that the DDA has, does not have an interest in the revenue share, but I think that they'll want a little bit more time to look at that and continue to dialogue with both the Fire District and Ambulance District as, as we look at options and proposals moving forward. This is an important issue. I know Tyler, Tim, are here representing both the Fire District and the Ambulance District, and so, we'll continue that dialogue moving forward. Another DDA matter, we're working closely with the Farmers Market for the summer location. One would think that's an easy task, but not necessarily. They have quite a large footprint. Sally Riley has been involved with that as well, and we'll continue to find the right location. We do have options. They're obviously an important amenity in our community and support, and we'll work very closely with them to try to find the right location and hopefully have that something that I can report back to the next council member. On their location, they want to start June 3rd as regular for their summer events. Main Street, as I mentioned, Darlene Jensen, along with the Board and the various committees that are involved, are very active. They're some fairly significant dudes. They just received 501(c)(3) IRS status as a nonprofit designation. This will allow the Main Street Board to receive additional foundation grants, eligibility and tax deductible contributions, which will help in lending their mission and work program. The city liaison, the main board, we want to thank Bob Carlson for his, his efforts. He made some major contributions. He still, as he mentioned, is going to be involved with their design committee, and I know he'll, has a strong interest in the downtown pedestrian and design of, in the downtown area specifically. We also are, are selecting a DOLA for new members. The State Department of Local Affairs, which is the Main Street program, is, is under. We have a consultant service, and we received a $5,000 grant for visioning and marketing for downtown. We'll be utilizing Denver University students, and that project will be completed in June of this year. So, there'll be some interaction between DDA and Main Street as we move forward. Some smaller projects include retail information kiosk in Woodland Station. Main Street is also involved with the Fourth of July co-sponsorship with Build a Generation. Be more to follow as we approach the Fourth of July celebration. Again, it'll be conducted at the Cultural Center this year in that area, so look forward to that event. And then also, you'll be seeing some power washing and dedication downtown. That's a joint effort between Main Street and the city as we move forward post snow conditions, and we look forward to getting that underway and moving forward, you know, including the downtown and the Main Street area, particularly for the retail presence. That's what I have for, for you tonight. Again, I look forward for the new members for our orientation moving forward to discuss the various topics that are in economic development, DDA and Main Street. And welcome once again, and what questions are council, council have at this point?
Thanks, Brian. Thank you. Thanks very much.
And during the meeting, Brian was sitting at the front. And Tim Beans is here from the ambulance district this evening.
Tim is here.
Yeah, he mentioned Tyler, but I want to acknowledge that Tim is here as well. Just a couple of things very quickly. I want to add my kudos to Suzanne and the team for the election process. As the mayor mentioned earlier about the rain turning into water that comes out of your faucet, when somebody puts a vote in and then suddenly you know the numbers, there's a bunch of intermediate steps, and there's a talented staff and a really talented team of six election judges that helped pull this off. We hope to bring them to you to, at the next council meeting and acknowledge their efforts. They really, really worked well, and when the staff had some emergency issues, that team of judges really stepped up and pulled us through this entire election. But again, thanks to Suzanne for her leadership. Our two new members, orientation will be May 5th. We'll get that agenda out to you soon so that you'll, we'll get you on that moving train as quickly as we can. And also, April 21st, council, you heard Kate say there's going to be a work session at 5:30 on some of the wastewater plant issues. Next to last item, if we could, get everyone to stay for just a few minutes. We'd like to get a photo of the new councils so that we can get that on Facebook and be current. And lastly, your city of Woodland Park donkey basketball team represented you very well last night. We came in second place. We were the defending champions. We couldn't hold our own against Charis Bible College, but Miles played. Kate was the captain and the organizer. I was there, as well as the mayor, the mayor pro temp, and Councilman Sawyer, and I'm looking out in the audience to see if anybody else was there. Jessica was there as well. We had a great time, and we raised a lot of money for the Lions Club, and all of us came out relatively unscathed. That's all I've got this evening. Thank you.
It was fun, and you should see the city manager in action. It was, it was a lot of fun. Okay, I have no comments on written correspondence, and if there's nothing else, this meeting is now adjourned.
For the photo, if you'd be good, I'd like to get it here. You hear, three and three. Kind of like...